Well, I think I'm the senior council member, so I call this meeting to order because I am. I am the senior council member. So let's have the, let's have the roll call.
And just for the record, this is a joint meeting of the Town of Atherton Council and Planning Commission.
Right, okay, so we'll take both roll calls. So roll call of the council, please.
Certainly, Councilmember Hawkins Manuelian.
Aye.
Councilmember DeGolia.
Eric.
Councilmember Widmer.
Yes.
And we'll note that Councilmember Vice Mayor Lempers and Vice Mayor Lewis are not here yet, but if they join, I'll announce them when they join. Planning Commissioner, Mr. Eric Lane.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Tenelli. I see Mr. Paul Tenelli is joining in on makeup period to speak now. Bishop Lamb. Bishop Lerner.
Here.
Here.
Thank you.
I've been a year on you now.
Yeah, I just was giving some, some instructions to someone. So the, the next item up is public comments. With the Councilmember Widmer's permission, I'll just kind of mention for anybody joining on the public, you have a few ways that will, will accept it. You can use the participants button at the bottom of your screen. If you're joining by Zoom link, raise your hand and you'll be called upon. You can also use the text feature, which we allow. And if you're dialing in, which I don't think anyone is, you can dial star nine on your receiver and we'll accept public comments. Does anyone have any public comments, any member of the public at this time?
And they can take, they can make the couple of public comments when we're on the item as well.
Yes, sir, they, they certainly can. So in, in line with that, I did receive one public comment around 3:15. I sent that out to the planning commission.
Yeah, I got it, I got it.
And the, the council, and I'll announce that when that comes up for the item, but.
Who's, who's doing the blowing there? I don't, I guess that's an electric blower. Their, their excuse for that. Okay, item number one, item number, if there's no public comments now.
No, sir.
Then we'll move to item number three, which is everything other than adjourned.
Thank you, Mr. Councilmember Widmer and members of the Council on Planning Commission. As you know, a while back, the town contracted with Rene Public Policy Group, RPPG, with respect to housing legislation to help us and assist us with strategizing around housing legislation and follow more intently the plethora of how the housing legislation at the state level. So they are here this evening to make a presentation. We have Dane Hutchings and Daniel Carrick here. Both have worked at the state level and with the league and a number of other jurisdictions as well. They're going to give a presentation, but before they move into that, we also have a staff who will follow up that presentation with the staff report. That's part of your agenda packet as well. So first we'll move to Dane and Dan. Dane, if you want to take it away from here.
Yeah, and we'll take, we'll take questions and public comments on Dane's part before we move into the staff report, okay? You all right with that?
For sure.
Because there's, I'm sure there's going to be questions with regards to the state legislation.
Absolutely.
Great, well, good afternoon, council members and planning commissioners. My name is Dane Hutchings. I am the Managing Director of the Rene Public Policy Group. As George mentioned, our firm was retained to work with the Town of Atherton. Really, at, at this stage, really just tracking, assessing, providing analysis and general counsel on the plethora of bills that are moving through. I want to quickly start off by giving a quick run through what we're going to be going through today. Just really giving you a, a, really a 30,000 foot view of, of, you know, really why I think a lot of local governments across the state are just going, you know, what is, what is, you know, why are there 300 bills, bills on housing, you know, introduced every single year before the ink dries on our, on our policy updates? We have to all of a sudden modify them all over again. And so we'll touch on that slightly or just a little bit. Talk about the governor's new housing accountability unit. And then I know we're talking about the housing element today. So we'll touch on sort of non-compliance and what happens in that case. Then quickly touch on some, some of the top legislation. Again, there's been about 300 bills introduced. A lot of them that are actually currently being heard right now in the Assembly Local Government Committee. And they're moving throughout the years, but we're just going to touch on a couple that we thought would have the, the greatest impact to the town. And then, of course, open it up for questions or discussions. And by the way, if folks, if, if members of the council or, or the commission want to jump in, still, please feel free to jump in anytime during the presentation to ask questions. But certainly want to preserve some time at the end for, for general questions if, if there are some. Quickly, my name again, you know, Dane Hutchings. I am with RPPG. I'm joined by Dan Carrick, my colleague, he's a senior policy advisor with our firm. For those of you who don't know Dan, he was the Housing and Land Use Legislative Advocate for the League of California Cities, as well as the Deputy Executive Director and Legislative Director. Has about 30 years of housing and land use experience, really with the nexus of local government. Also Sharon Gonzalez and that's El Becerra are part of our team as well. So jumping into this, you know, really from a, from a sort of a high level, over the last, really in the last four to five years, there's been a significant shift of, of legislation really geared at targeting local government and, and really meddling with their, with their local land use authority. And, and, and you know, where the state's coming from, from their narrative is that housing, you know, the critique of single family zoning, there, there's really this onslaught of attacks on single family zoning. They, they've really tied this narrative of, of to, to, to single family zoning and, and planned communities to, to the sort of the days of old of redlining. I, I think frankly, let's be honest, housing production has not kept pace with population and growth. We've seen significant growth in California. We've also seen at the same time as we've seen growth in California, you know, local governments aren't responsible for swinging the hammer and building those homes. And so we've seen limited construction that, that is not, has not kept pace with growth. We have seen a steady, steadily declining revenues or investments coming from the federal government. And of course, I think, and, and Dan can speak to this, you know, one of the, the biggest blows to, to an ongoing funding source was the elimination of redevelopment agencies in 2011. You know, that was the ongoing multi-billion dollar, ongoing funding source that had requirements in those dollars that we would, we would engage in these long covenants for low, low income communities across, across the state. Low income housing and things of that nature, that, that tool has been taken away. And there have been several attempts to try and bring that back. The thing that we talk about often is that the, the moment that redevelopment was, was eliminated, the legislature tried in some form every year to try to bring it back. But to date, the, those efforts have not yielded the results we, we have been hoping for. And I think really from a polit, you know, from a, from a grander, you know, perspective, policy expectations just don't really match the realities. I mean, the realities are, the legislature right now is really tunnel visioned on the only, the only solution to the housing crisis is to, is to, is more density, more density, more density, less local land use authority, but really the realities of, of water supply, which I know is critical throughout the peninsula, the need for increased infrastructure. We touched on lack of ongoing subsidies, really market demands and, and the onus on developers who can choose to develop when they want. You know, shortage of labor availability and also a big trend happening right now you're seeing is that every affordable housing bill that is moving through the legislature that has a requirement for affordable housing is being stopped because the major building and construction trades are coming in. The union construction trade groups are saying, well, no, if you want to build affordable housing, you have to have skilled and trained workforce attached to that, which if you add that specific language to a bill, drives it to cost so much that you are really unable to build something affordable. And so there's that nexus with the legislature is how do we ensure that we're, we're trying to work with our labor friends and partners to ensure they're continuing to, to grow in their industry while at the same time actually building affordable housing. I'm going to pass it to Dan for a moment to touch a little bit on what happens when cities don't, are unable to comply with the housing element. He was very, he was working on AB 101 when it was a budget bill that was flying through the legislature. Dan, can you touch on this just a moment?
Yes, good afternoon, everybody, Dan Carrick. So, you know, for the housing element has been a requirement for, for, you know, at least three or four decades. And there, the one thing I would say is in addition to your community, about 98% of the cities and the counties in the state are actually complying with the housing element. That means they have a, a plan that the state of California has approved. But still, as, as Dane touched on, there's always a lot of rhetoric about how local governments are somehow standing in the way of, of more production. But as part of a budget trailer bill, the Gavin Newsom administration in 2019, you might have seen the press reports of the governor talking about, I think it was Huntington Beach, and, and he was going to, you know, crack down on, on communities that weren't doing their share in terms of complying with the laws. And so in that trailer bill, the legislature and the governor kind of beefed up the enforcement related to the housing element. So today, if you're, if you're going back and forth with the Department of Housing over whether or not your plan is a mad meeting the, the terms of the law. Ultimately, if you have a disagreement, the Attorney General can sue a, a city or county. And then if you end up in a court and a judge says that you're, the city or county is in violation of the law, you, the city or county will potentially incur increasing penalties that can go up to, start at 10,000 per month and can go up to $600,000 a month. And then, of course, if you're, if a city or county is, is violating a court order, if the judge tells you, you need to do certain things to bring your plan into compliance with the law, of course, judges have a lot more authority to enforce their, their rulings than, than just these fines. The other thing that will happen if your, if your community is deemed to be not in compliance is you'll, you won't have access to certain housing and, and infrastructure funds. But again, most communities in the state, the vast majority of them have state approved plans. And, and so, but, but the, the laws keep changing. So the, the hurdle that, that you're having to come, get over to, to be able to obtain a certified housing element is, is continuing to, 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 to change.
So here, here are two really major bills that, that out of all of the, you know, I, again, I believe there's a close to about 300, we're in, in the legislative timing perspective, we're going to start seeing some of these bills being stopped and stalled. But, and by the end of session, which concludes in early September, what we're going to be seeing is probably about 10 or 15 really bad bills that, that are going to be the ones that are going to be the big battles at the end of session. But, and one that I would anticipate in particular, that will, that will likely be one of those bills is Senate Bill Nine. This is a bill that frankly, last year was, was simply a, a, a procedural vote away from becoming law last year. Senate Bill Nine requires ministerial approval of up to six units on an existing parcel. Now, it's important to note that SB Nine was amended today. And so when, when we submitted the, the slide deck, this was before the bill was amended. The bill was amended today. The intent of the amendments, or I should say the, the intent of, you know, the author has said, well, look, I really want to clarify that only four units can, you know, two duplexes. This is a duplex bill, you can only build two duplexes, and that's what I want to do to clarify this. So of course, you know, we live by the ethos of trust but verify. And, you know, Dan had a, had a, had a moment this afternoon to take a look at the amendments. We'd like to do a deeper analysis and of course defer to, to your legal counsel as well. But it is, you know, even as amended, it is still unclear how many units can be, be built. Because there's no, you know, declaring statement, you know, it's very simple in the state legislature. You can put a statement that says, you know, it is not, it is the intent of the legislature that no ADUs or JDUs can be built when utilizing SB Nine, you know, an SB Nine methodology or something of that. I mean, you can put a declarative statement in there to clear all this up. You know, there's some very smart people on, on Pro Tem Atkins's team. They know that this is an easy way to do it, yet they just won't do that. And so it, it leaves you to wonder, you know, sometimes there's, there's, there, there's some gray area in there that, that they like, that developers would like to try and exploit some of the, that maybe perhaps legal ambiguities of the bill. Dan, did you want to add anything on SB Nine?
Yes, it's, it's still, I mean, it would be great to, to be able to tell you in absolute clarity, here is the maximum amount of units that can be built under SB Nine. But, but it, the, the, the language continues to be very cloudy. The amendments that I just reviewed earlier today, I don't really give us the clarity that, 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 that we would need to say with certainty. So I think for pretty much the write-up continues to stand for itself. And so I think on, on this bill, and this is going back to what I just said about the housing element, I think the other disconnect is, I know one of the things you're going to be working on is, is adopting a new housing element. You've, you're dealing with, I think, an increase of, I think it's about 300% in terms of what your prior Rena numbers were for your, for the last time you did your housing element. So you're going to have to do a lot of work to, to kind of figure out ways to hit those numbers and a community planning process. I think one of the frustrations, at least I have and probably you have, is even when you do all this planning and, and you figure out a way, you can, you can get to your Rena number and you get an approved plan, bills like this will affect your community whether or not you have a plan that the state is certified or not. And I think that's, that is one of the, I think, the, besides the challenges with the bill, I think a major policy issue on this bill and some of these others is if you've got a certified housing element, the state of California has said you're doing your, your part on housing, why should some of these bills that, that go in and sort of micromanage your community? Why should they apply to you? But anyway.
One, one last comment. One of, one of the comments that the League of California Cities, they continue to be opposed to the bill. One, one comment they continuously state is that there is no clarifying language that would enable a locality to actually utilize, you know, quote SB Nine units towards their Rena numbers. And so again, when we're talking about 300% increases in Rena numbers and then a bill that would take away all local planning, local review and local authority on how these are set, and then we don't even have the ability to claim those units as, as, as units that we can count towards our, our, our Rena process, it really does just pose a, a, a series of significant challenges. Moving on to AB 1401 by Assemblywoman Friedman. This measure is pretty simple in nature in that, I mean, it's not, you know, SB Nine is, you know, now it's become this 35 page bill. SB or AB 1401 is pretty simple. It just says you can't enforce any minimum parking requirements or enforce any parking requirements on residential, commercial, or anything other, anything of the like if you're within one half mile of walking distance of public transit or a high quality transit corridor. It does have one exemption for parking requirements for EV charging stations and also makes clarifying amendments or clarifying language that you must comply with the, the federal ADA requirement. So some of those handicap parking spaces. But apart from that, there are no restrictions. And so again, this is a bill that instead of localities being able to work with developers on putting some minimum parking standards or requirements, this bill would then remove that from happening. And so for a small town like Atherton, very close to the El Camino, it's a possibility this could, this could encapsulate quite a bit of your, of, of your town. SB, oh, sorry, Dan.
All I was going to add was, you know, so I know like if you think about back to your, your housing element, you're working on it, you, let's say you changed the zoning to allow for some increased density somewhere. I'm sure residents are going to want to know, well, what about the parking? And you'll, you know, kind of adjust for that. Well, then a bill like this comes along and sort of eclipses that. So that's, that's the thing I was pointing out, the, you know, you've got enough of a challenge adopting your housing element and some of these bills coming in from the side don't help.
And then, Dan, I'd love you for you to take the lead on SB Eight. I know that, that the, the bill that this is extending had significant concerns from not only the Town of Atherton, but, but quite a bit of, of other jurisdictions across the state.
Yeah, this is a bill, it's, it's, you know, if you read the bill, it's, you know, it's, we're extending the sunset on another law and then what is that? It's kind of confusing, just, so I tried to distill it in this. So basically what you had is in, in 20, in 2019, the legislature passed this bill that said, we're basically freezing all of your, your zoning and, and land use related to housing kind of in place. And you can't do anything more stringent than that. And you, and you can't, and then if you, if you reduce your, the, the capacity of land to accommodate housing, you need to make it up, make up for it somewhere else. And then there were a couple of other things in this bill about, you know, you know, processing a permit, issues about when the permit is deemed complete versus under existing law that, or prior law, the planners had more ability to make sure when someone comes in with an application that it, it, it matches up with all the, the criteria that you have locally. This bill gave some more flexibility for, on the part of the developer to, if they put something in that met a statutory definition, then they could, they could argue it, it's complete for purposes of the Permit Streamlining Act and processing anyway. So this bill basically, it was supposed to have a five-year sunset and the authors coming along and essentially extending the bill another five years. So, so essentially freezing in place across the state, whatever, whatever the zoning was, especially as it applied and conditions, especially as it applied to housing. And so that's that bill.
And I would, and I, and I would also just add that I, in speaking with the folks that were engaged on, on the original, the, the Housing Crisis Act of 2019, two, two observations. One, one of the deals that the author made, Senator Skinner out of Berkeley, said, okay, I, I will take a five-year sunset date and then virtually the next year goes in and says, no, never mind, I'm going to extend it for another five years. So that's, that, you know, it, it's this, this notion of maybe going back on a deal that you had made with stakeholders. And secondarily, while this bill didn't get a ton of fanfare, you know, this wasn't one of the big, big bills that garnered a lot of attention when it moved to the legislature, probably because 2,000 bills moved to the legislature every year and it's hard to maybe track every one of them. I do know that, that this bill has now been subject to several acts of litigation. So there has been some challenge from localities challenging the, the elimination of, of that local discretion. And now this bill just then goes out and extends that sunset for another five years. And so certainly a challenge on that. And then, you know, last but not least, SB 478. Now, I, I, I do know that, well, so originally SB 478 applied to both single family zones and multifamily home of, of units. The bill has been amended to only apply to multifamily homes, but it does restrict the floor to area ratio, you know, the square footage around, around a lot that, that can be utilized. You know, we thought that this would be important, especially when you're looking at your housing element and trying to find ways to meet those really aggressive Rena numbers that if you wanted, you wanted to use multifamily housing, that this bill would be something that, that, that may be of importance to you. It does limit the restrictions of floor to area ratios that you can use in your zoning process. And so I think, you know, again, I know that we had limited time today. There's about 20 others that you probably would hate, but these are the, you know, and we are working with your team, providing a, a long list of priority bills to, to pay attention to and to potentially engage on, but for purposes of this conversation, oh, we, I forgot, we have one more. So AB 989 Gabriel, this one really goes on and sort of this, this housing accountability department that the governor's been pushing. This is a bill that, that it creates a new appeals board for really for developers. And so if there's any sort of, if the developer feels that they've been aggrieved or denied on a project for really any reason, they have the ability now to challenge that in this new sort of like a, an administrative law process that would really be more favorable forum for developers. And so it gives, that gives developers yet another avenue to appeal any adverse decision. And so right now there are, as I stated, there was about 300 bills that had been introduced on housing. About 150 of those are still actually, are introduced and moving through this year, the first year in a two-year session. And so with that, I will, I, I can either keep my screen up to, if, if folks have questions to go back to a certain bill, or I can, I can surrender the power of a shared screen and, and turn it back to you guys. So thank you.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I believe you have, you have the con.
Yes, just learning that, just learning that. So thanks, apologies for being late. I had sent the mayor into it, didn't realize she wasn't going to, going to be here. So thanks very much for that. Someone catch me up, where, where, where are we? We, what's, what's next?
We're just in the.
We're taking questions on the, on the consultant's comments or presentation on the bills that are in Sacramento.
Sounds, sounds great. Thanks, thanks very much, Bill, for, for moving things as far. So with that, to quote Mr. Widmer, can we take questions? Anybody have questions on, on this presentation or related matters?
Talking about from the commission or from a public?
Oh.
From, first from the commission. Which would be the, the committee and council, I guess.
This is, I have a question.
Yeah, right.
So we know that there's a long history of different opinions and responses to those opinions about slow growth versus fast growth. And we've seen in different communities, this issue argued out in public and resulting in campaigns for one side or the other in many local jurisdictions. And this week I was at a CCG meeting on Resource Management and Climate Protection Committee, which I've served on for several years. And an issue came up that raised this question for me. And that issue was, we had a long discussion of the current water crisis and what that is going to result in, given that we've had less rain, I think, than we've had in any two-year period other than maybe one in history. And when you add housing, especially when you add what would be 15% new housing units to what you currently have, there's obviously going to be an increase in resource use and consumption. And different people in communities who choose the slow growth versus fast growth mode don't expect to at every turn be overruled by the state legislature with different theories on growth, which in the last two years have been fast growth based on the theory, I think, that increased housing will solve or reduce the homelessness crisis in the state. And whether there's a different theory that, I'm, I'm not really trying to get into, but what it raised the question for me, and this is my question for you all, is I don't know the ins and outs of the state constitution, but I, I do believe that the state constitution is extremely complex and many things have been added to this constitution in the last 40 or 50 years based on initiatives and no doubt some actions of the legislature. And it seems to me that the California state constitution tends to protect lots and lots of things that there's probably plenty of conflict in it. But I would just have to believe that there's an ability, there's some inherent. But I would just have to believe that there's an ability, there's some inherent right that we can't be forced to consume more resources than we and our collective constituents believe is appropriate. There has to be the ability to obtain some kind of constitutional protection around that. And I don't know if that's been litigated or addressed in the context of this crisis, which I'm not saying the housing crisis. I I I recognize that there's a housing crisis, but I also think there's a crisis where the state and the state legislature in particular is attempting to impose a view of growth on local jurisdictions. And and I don't know if that's been examined or addressed in the context of the constitution and whether there's any protections in that constitution, but that's the source of my question.
Well, I can I can tell you that well, let me let me take a step back and first say, I I completely hear you and understand where, you know, your 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 inquisitive nature in this. I would have to defer to your your counsel on that as far as the constitutional or the or the perhaps legal challenges based on constitutional protections. From a policy perspective, I can tell you that we are very aware, we've actually been made very aware of of the recent issues, particularly with in the peninsula and the surrounding communities with respect to the potential water shortages and perhaps even the mandated reduction of about forty eight percent of water usage for some of these communities. How you build more and more housing when when if you turn on the faucet, no water comes on. That is something that is just not being considered by the legislature. And in fact, to double down on that, you'll note that one of the things I probably should have added to this presentation is that this year in particular, every one of these bills that seeks to completely waive CEQA or exempt CEQA for these projects, all of them are not being heard by the environment equality community or environment equality committees or natural resources committees in the legislature. And the reason for that is that the authors are saying, well, because of COVID and timing, we just don't have the time to go through these this deliberative process. Therefore, we are not going that those committees are not weighing in on in on the process, which I think is a major, major challenge from a process and policy perspective. Moreover, with drought comes other conditions such as fire. And what we have seen time over time is bills that are seeking that to to either limit or have smart growth in these high fire zones. These bills won't even, they either won't get a hearing or they're being killed very quickly because the the ethos of the state legislature is build, build more density, more density, regardless if you're in a flat fire zone, regardless if you don't have the resources, we'll deal with that later. That seems to be the tone of the legislature. Dan, am I am I am I capturing that correctly?
Yeah, no, I think I concur with all that you said. A couple of things I would add is, you know, the one thing I I know that a couple of things in the constitution, one is the people's right of initiative. That that is a bedrock constitutional principle. And some of these bills are, I think, starting to probably trigger a potential future clash between the the right of the local residents to pass an initiative and if to extend it limits growth or, you know, how, you know, sort of define the community that they want to live in through through the the ballot box, the right of initiative versus what you really have is state zoning, a state, the state is is, you know, the 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 line that's been crossed here is, I would say, as Dane touched on, you know, for three or four years ago, the state never really crossed over the line and said, town of Atherton or city of X, you need to rezone your, you know, this particular piece of land this way, and here's how it's going to be done. And if a developer comes in and they meet these seven things, you have to approve it. They really never went that far. What they would say is, you have to have a housing element and you have to, you know, zone for at least, you know, whatever, you know, three hundred housing units and you have to meeting various income categories. But they left you do it, right? They didn't get into which parcel you did. Now they're kind of stepping over those lines and starting to directly zone property. And as you know, with zoning, I mean, the first thing is due process. You know, if you're going to rezone somebody's property, I mean, there, you know, historically, the neighbors and others that were potentially affected pro or con or had an opinion on it could come down to City Hall or the Planning Commission, and you guys would would have that discussion. The legislature with these ministerial proposals, I think, is also affecting due process issues between residents that 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 may be impacted by by these decisions. So I think the other thing about the constitution, for the most part, it's left local government through the police power the ability to zone and regulate land use that for the most part has been the province of local government and has been recognized and sort of in the legislatures kind of let that go. But I do think, and to your earlier point, I I think I think these policies, if they're really, as the legislature continues down this path, I think they are are going to push for and and result in more legal disputes and potentially future initiatives. I mean, the the one initiative on on environmental issues that we've seen in the past was the Coastal Act, where, you know, that that was an effort by the the public to protect the coast from development in the in the past. There really hasn't been a lot of land use initiatives. You know, we vote on initiatives all the time. There really haven't been a lot of land use initiatives, but 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 I think that this recent trend may may promote some in the near future.
Mr. Chair, got a question?
Please.
All right. I've got, actually, I've got a couple of questions. First of all, it sounds to me like other elements we have within the within our planning structure, like tree protection and everything else that would all be wiped out by this also.
Some of these bills like SB nine, they they basically say that you've got a right to build, that the developer has a right to build the unit. I think it's eight hundred feet. There's different criteria. And then it basically says that no local requirements can physically preclude the development of that unit. And as I read that, and I believe your city has an oak tree ordinance or something. The way I read that is yes, I mean, I think that, you know, if a developer is is focused on, you know, building a unit of a certain size, and that means they've got to remove a tree, I think the legislature is saying you can remove the tree and you can enforce your ordinance. That's the way I read it.
All right. Now, I just have two more questions. The next one is, you said that the 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 laws that were proposed, or at least one of them were proposed, did not include housing associations? What are the criteria for that?
The, and I think your your general counsel is, we we had a prior conversation where I think we agreed on this. The, when you look at bills in the legislature, homeowners associations are governed by the Davis Sterling Act. And as you know, a homeowner's association is essentially a contract among the residents. You know, they move into the association. As a resident, you agree to comply with the CCNRs and you have a homeowners association board and all that. Typically, in legislation related to land use issues, in order to preempt a homeowner's association or to attempt to preempt, you have to basically call out the Davis Sterling Act and say that you're trying to do it. And even if you do try to do it, there's, I think, there's a, there's always a legal dispute. I I think it's this is another area where the legislature hasn't really meddled with. They've kind of left homeowners associations alone is and and people are living by the rules that they themselves have agreed to within certain confines. The legislature really hasn't meddled with that. But so this bill doesn't, SB nine doesn't directly do it. But with the politics right now in the legislature, I mean, having been around for thirty years, I think if SB nine goes through, the the group's going to come back around. They're going to try to figure out a way to to make it apply.
Well, one thing, just to just to add on to what Dan said, is that there is an association, there is a a state advocacy organization, and I I'm going to misquote the name. I do apologize, something like the California Homeowners Association Action Committee. And I've been working actually very closely with the lobbyist that is representing that organization. And they have, I can tell you, both with SB eleven twenty, the version of this bill last year, and as well with SB nine, have been working and specifically asking for a clear exemption. And the author will not give that exemption. So again, it's it's it it just, it leaves that door open. Again, that's not, that's not a legal, a clear legal response. But again, it's the same, it's the same argument where we say, if if you're only trying to allow SB nine to build two duplexes and that's it, where one house currently stands, you can say that very clearly in a language. And if you choose not to, you know, there there you're, it makes you wonder why. And so the the advocate who is very, very qualified and has been really hammering this issue is clearly seeking a a clear cut amendment that does not apply to the Davis Sterling Act. And the author and the sponsors of the bill will not capitulate to that request.
Okay, well, go ahead, Mona. Sorry.
Thank you. I I just wanted to provide a little bit more context to some of the questions that were raised. First, Councilmember DeGolia, just to answer broadly to your to your point, municipalities obtain their police powers and general authority because they're they're creations of the state. And so they do not have independent initiative and referenda abilities in the same way that voters and individuals do. So while we cannot, as the town of Atherton, seek a referendum for any of these pieces of legislation, should they be adopted in their existing form, the voters still do have that ability. And then as to your question, Commissioner Lane, at present, HOAs are not required to comply with these housing requirements in the same way that municipalities, excuse me, municipalities would be. So to the extent that we are required to allow the construction of ADUs and JADUs, if a more restrictive covenant within the CCNRs of an HOA prohibits that, that then becomes a private dispute between the property owner and the HOA. I think the general theme that is being shared with all of you today is that the direction of the legislature seems to be shifting to more broad and broad legislation that encompasses all avenues of housing, whether it's located within private subdivisions or whether it's just within a municipality. But again, that is not the current status of the law.
All right. The last thing is when we're, when I was in corporate, we always did things with benchmarking and and best case analysis. And I'm trying to think of one place in the world where high density actually created a longer term low income situation, whether it's Hong Kong or New York or San Francisco. So I'm trying to figure out where the where the density where the density comparison is is being drawn from other than just a lot more houses or more more housing.
Well, there's a confluence of policies that connect to the density. One is, the other big focus of the legislature of the last decade or so is, you know, climate change and trying to do things to mitigate greenhouse gas emissions. And so obviously, connected to that is trying to reduce automobile use and therefore people having people ride more transit. That's how you get more toward higher density transitory development. So that's kind of one policy objective the legislature is working on. On the on on the density issue related to affordability, there has been in the housing element for a number of years embedded in the housing element is this idea that when you say, well, I want you to zone some land so that, you know, for to accommodate housing for lower income individuals. Well, I mean, how do you do that? Density has been sort of the default way that that a local government says, okay, I've zoned it for, you know, twenty units an acre. And then the Department of Housing would say, okay, well, that, you know, that is, you know, is is sufficient to allow a a housing development to be built there. To your point, you know, when you get to the real affordable housing issue, that the real, the the folks that are that are struggling out there, a lot of these, they can't afford market, you know, even if you had a higher density building, they can't afford to pay market rate rents for whatever that building and the land under under other amenities would cost. So that's where you go back to public subsidies. And as Dane pointed out, I mean, we we have this increasing demand that we should have more affordable housing. But at the same time, for the most part, we've had are the resources for affordable housing in terms of public subsidies, whether through formal redevelopment or other places, has has really been diminishing. So that's that's one of the challenges of this whole housing discussion is it's great to talk about affordable housing, but it really often involves some resources to to get to those rent levels. And and frankly, there's, there's only, you know, maybe enough resources for maybe, you know, ten percent of 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 this, the supposed goals for affordable housing.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. That's all right.
If I could, I've got a question, Dan, which relates to, all this talk about initiatives implies that something's broken in the political system and that the voters might go in a different direction than the legislature is currently going. And and if that's the case, there ought to be a political response that works in the legislature, it seems to me. Can you discuss why that's that's not happening?
Well, I think what you have right now, the last couple of years, is you you had, you had, you know, Gavin Newsom come in as governor and say, you know, three point five million housing units, put put it out there as a goal. And then you have in the legislature, pretty much, you know, super majorities of Democrats in both houses, most of these land use bills only take a majority vote to go through. So you pretty much have an open door for a lot of the politically within the legislature for a lot of of proposals, such as we're talking about, to move through the legislature and get to the governor. So I think that's kind of, you know, Jerry Brown, you know, he he was, yeah, he worked a little bit on the housing issue, but he had his own, he had different things he had focused on. And then you go prior to that, you Arnold Schwarzenegger. So I think one thing that really changed is the governor, by by really coming out and and talking about this massive goal, has really opened up the the political door in the legislature for a lot of these proposals. I don't think a lot of these proposals are too well thought out and and but it doesn't seem to be in the current process. You also have the two chairs of the housing committees, Senator Weiner in the Senate and David Chu in the Assembly. They're both from San Francisco, as is the governor. So you have a lot of the politics of of San Francisco and and San Francisco legislators sort of dominating the discussion as well. So it's it's been hard to find balance points within the process to have a a more just 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 put a little more of a reality check into some of these discussions.
Mona?
And to add to that, I I personally view this a little bit like, and some of you might remember this, but the Bell scandal. So the city of Bell abuses its Brown Act and the legislature adopts statutes that impact every single local agency in California to make up for it. And in the same way, we do have some communities in California where the what they call the NIMBYs, not my backyard groups, come out and they make sure that development projects do not happen. And some of those, even when they're approved by the Planning Commission and Council, are then overturned by referenda of the people. So in response, we're seeing a lot of these new pieces of legislation. We're also seeing deviations from what had always been the normal in the past thirty, forty years now with CEQA. So CEQA, California Environmental Quality Act, has always been applied to discretionary projects. But as an example, in two thousand and fourteen, we learned from the Supreme Court that for local for development projects that are approved by initiative, then CEQA is not applicable. So the case law and our statutes are really, again, pushing us, whether we want to or not, in the direction of developing more housing for the sake of having more production. You know, setting aside all of the GHG issues, affordability issues, one of the goals is we need, we need more production housing.
For Dane and Daniel, that's not really a nuts and bolts kind of a thing, more of an opinion. And that is, and And that is, and we're seeing the high density housing all along the peninsula, obviously. And I'm wondering, in your opinion, in your years of dealing with this and seeing what's going on, is there a commensurate level of attention being dedicated to, to infrastructure and keeping pace with? I mean, there's so much push toward the high density housing. The infrastructure's got to keep pace and are you seeing that effort?
I can take a first stab at this. I know Dan's got his opinions on this too. The answer i- in short is no. When, when, I, I can tell you, in the era of COVID, which is why you're seeing some of the most aggressive housing proposals being advanced right now, because it just, it, it's very difficult to really engage directly with lawmakers and their staff because of the, of the in-person restrictions. But the answer is when we bring up, I think, policy-based responses to say, we don't have the infrastructure to, to keep up with, with, with the rapid demand of housing. We don't have the funding. I mean, our, some of our infrastructure is hundreds, hundreds of years, a hundred years old. We don't have the wa, the, the water supply. We don't have the lack of subs, we have the lack of subsidies. These are all issues that, that have, are, are now being turned to say, that is just the same excuses we've been hearing for years and that is all NIMBY language. You're just, you're just pushing a NIMBY agenda. You just don't want to build. And, you know, I, I have a, I have a working, a working theory. Because what you've seen right now, especially in the last couple of years, is the legislature has taken, has, has created this narrative that it is, it is city and county government is the, that is the, the only impediment to affordable housing. We're it. That's it. It's our fault, you know, and, and, you know, they're, in every bill that you see, the most problematic bills are the ones that continuously erode our local decision-making. What happens when, when, you know, in five or 10 years down the road, when we, when every locality has to comply with these, we zone appropriately, we open the doors and say, okay, you know, we have no ministerial approvals, or we have all, it's all approvals of ministerial. We have no hearings, no reviews, developers, you hand the keys to developers, and there's still not housing that's being built. You know, right now, there's this coalition of, of, of major developers, major trade unions in the legislature, really, you know, seeking out, you know, using local government as a scapegoat. Well, when you've passed all these bills and there's still not enough housing being built, it, it, you know, my theory is that the legislature is, I think, and then going to turn to the, to the developers and say, okay, time, time to start initiating, you know, you know, profitability caps and mandate that if you build a new subdivision, you have to build, you know, 20 or 30% affordable or something to that nature. And I, it'll be curious to see how the development community reacts to that because the, all of the policy-based reasons for collaboration with the state have, at this point, really just fallen on deaf ears. Dan, did I, did I encapsulate that correctly or do you have anything else to add on that?
No, it's, I think, pretty good. You know, as, yes, I, I agree with you that, that for the most part, infrastructure really isn't in the conversation. The legislature, you, you at the local level, you have your, your general plan. You have to kind of make everything connect, right? You have to make your community work, you know, together. You can't just do one thing here and act like something else over here doesn't matter. The legislature can. Their, their, their policy process is kind of siloed. You got the Housing Committee, you know, kicking out housing bills and you have the Environmental Committee kicking out environmental bills and you have, and they don't really spend a lot of time, you know, seeing how they reconcile or how, how different policies reconcile. And, and as you know, local government, your options or, you know, our options are, are much more limited in terms of paying for new infrastructure. We got Prop 218, Prop 13, all these different things that limit local or, or have to trigger two-thirds votes and other things, you know, from a constitutional standpoint. But no, it's, it's kind of, I think these goals are being set out. And then there's, you know, there, there isn't a lot of patience on the part of legislators to really, to really listen to the local realities and, and then find ways of, of, of maybe helping solve some of those other problems that, that, you know, we deal with locally. One little quick story on, on infrastructure. When Gavin, or not Gavin, when Schwarzenegger was governor, there was a director of the Department of Housing. And she also used to be part of the, the Home Builders Association at one point. Anyway, she was also a developer back in her day. And she was working on an infill project and they were going to do something and the city had approved it, whatever it was. And they went out to, they dug up the street to tap into the sewer pipe. The sewer pipe was made out of redwood, you know, in this, in this one city. And, and that was something, I mean, that was a, a director of housing that got it, you know, and certainly understood our infrastructure challenges, but, but it's, it's, it's been harder lately.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I know we, we said to get to a staff report on this as well. Are there any other questions? And if not, are there any comments from the public on this issue?
I don't, I don't see anyone with their hands raised, Vice Mayor. But just for anyone joining the meeting, if you'd like to make a public comment, you have a few options and I'll, I'll post them in the chat. You can raise your hand by clicking Participants at the bottom of your screen. If you're dialing in by phone, you can dial star nine. You can also do so by communicating to me in the chat. I did receive one public comment from Mary Widmer that was shared with the Planning Commission, the City Council and a few staff members. And if you'd like, I can, I can address that. It's pretty short. Or the public can also go to our website where it's been posted for review.
I think it's, I think posting it's sufficient.
Okay.
And I think, I see a name, I see a Mary Beth on the screen. I don't know if that's, if that's Mary Beth Widmer or not, but let me just, if, if there are no comments, why don't we move on to the next step, George? And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dane. Thanks, Daniel.
Absolutely.
All right, we're going to move on to the, the staff side of the presentation and I believe that's Lisa, correct?
Thank you. Yes, I think Anthony, you're going to share the presentation. I'm assuming you've all had a chance to read the staff report. So given the time, I'm just going to skip through some of the slides because the meat of this is not really here from you. So first, I want to thank the City Council and Planning Commissioners for taking the time to meet this, this evening. We probably should do this more often, you know, we don't get together very much like this, so this is great. And thank you, Planning Commission. I know you're doing double duty tonight, so you need to leave at six. All right, Anthony, you want to go ahead and just skip to slide four, one more, there you go. So just where are we with the current housing element progress? We last updated our housing element, received certification March of 2015. And then we report annually to the state on production. So you see the allocation there is that first column, and that's 93 units over that eight-year planning period. And what we've produced so far is the next column, and that's the 90 units. Those have mostly been done through accessory dwelling units. And we conducted a survey when we started this housing element process to find out what the rent ranges were being charged by community members. And then we've been able to update that whenever a new accessory dwelling unit is constructed. We check and see what the rent is being charged. So that's how this allocation is done for the ADU units. So just last year, for example, 34 AD units were reported as constructed to the state. And that's really due to the recent changes in state law and the changes that the town was able to make. We do have some challenges with creating the above moderate income housing due to property owners' desire to remove dwelling units and create larger open spaces. Next. So this shows you our next RENA cycle. Yes, thank you. So it's assigned by the State HCD and then the A-BAG, the Association Bay Area Governments, does the allocation to each of the jurisdictions. And then it gets reviewed back and forth between HCD and A-BAG. And then it should be finalized, I believe, in the, the spring. If it just, it may have just recently been finalized and that may have just started our appeals process. See, it's quite a bit. The last RENA cycle was 93 units and this upcoming cycle is 348 net new units that we're supposed to plan for. And then you'll see how it's been allocated by the different income categories, the very low, low, moderate and above. Next slide. So what we wanted to do tonight is just kind of check in with you. We, we thought of some potential strategies to consider and to get your feedback. And this by no means and in no way is an exhaustive list, just some initial thoughts. And I'll walk through each of those and then maybe we can just chat a little bit about it. So one is increasing accessory dwelling unit production. So right now, the code allows one accessory dwelling unit and one junior dwelling unit per lot. We could increase that to allow two accessory dwelling units on lots and we could establish that minimum size, so maybe it's only on lots, one acre and greater that we allow to. And I think, you know, the community really values the, the ADUs and that could be a really good way to, to increase our production for the next cycle. Next item is, we currently allow multifamily housing at private schools, but it's really limited to, it's supposed to be the use of, the, the non-residential use of the property. So that would be teacher housing. And it does require issues of a conditional use permit. So one thought would be to amend that zoning district, the PFS zone, to allow multifamily housing by right, so you don't need the conditional use permit and not limited to teachers. So one issue may be that, you know, the school's having a hard time finding that many teachers that want to live on campus, but maybe they've got enough, you know, maybe five, and then they can rent the others out as, you know, just regular members of the community. So we also may need to consider amending setbacks and lot coverage regulations to make sure there's sufficient room on the property to accommodate that. So that's one idea. And then as well, in the POS zone, so the next slide shows, we also allow caretaker housing with a conditional use permit. So this would apply at the Bear Gulch Reservoir, Menlo Circus Club, as well at Holbert Palmer Park. Bear Gulch Reservoir does have a few housing units there where some of the, the staff live on site. And I believe there's one house at Menlo Circus Club. And as you know, we have one house at Holbert Palmer Park. So that could be another area we look at, maybe increasing the housing that's allowed and not limited to just those users of the site, but it could be open. They could rent it to any member of the community. And then this could also apply to, the Menlo Fire District owns one property adjacent to the fire station. So they bought a single-family home, so this could apply to that site. And then the next slide kind of looks at a little bit of what's kind of thought under the SB nine. So right now, R1B, which is the zoning district that's closer to El Camino, closer to the town center, allows one unit per lot and it also allows an ADU and a JDU. So one thought is you could rezone that and allow duplex development, so two units for one lot.
Lisa, can I go back to, to, you know, you said that in the earlier one about the private schools, but what about the public schools? They have a lot of land. They have teachers. They're trying to recruit teachers all the time from all over the area. And many of them can't teach here because they can't afford to live here because the rents are so high. So you did specifically mention the private schools, but I thought that this would also apply to the, the public schools.
You're correct. If we were to change that zoning district, it applies to all schools zoned under that. So yes, it would definitely, thank you. I'll correct that in the future, apply to the public schools as well. And I know that there was some conversation with public schools about trying to do that as well to retain teachers. I agree with you. Okay, so in the
I've got a question. So you proposed in connection with that item that the zoning would need not be limited to teachers, that it could be available to the general public. Could you, and I mean, I assume that it could be limited to teachers. Could it also be limited to school personnel, not just teachers, but anyone who worked at the school?
Yeah, I think one of the concerns that I have is right now, we've had that with the, the last two housing element cycles. We've had this ability for the teacher housing and we haven't seen production. So I'm trying to come up with something that I can tell HCD, we made a change. You know, the schools weren't able to produce the housing. It's kind of limited to the teachers only. We've now opened it up to the general community. It's by right, no longer requires a use permit. And maybe now we'll get to see that better production and show them we've removed a barrier and we've opened up this opportunity for the development.
But, but my question is, isn't, couldn't there be an intermediary step where in fact there would be a material change? It just wouldn't be opening it up to the general public, but it would be opening it up to any employee of the school?
Yeah, and that, that is really what's allowed now. It says any housing associated with the school use. So it could be that it's their admin staff that live there. It's not just teachers.
Okay.
It'd be any school employee could be there.
So right now, so your language in, in this item was not limited to teachers, but you're saying that, that wasn't correct, that what we have previously done is not limited to school employees?
It's limited to persons associated with the use, so it would be limited to school employees, yes. And, and the other example would be if it was at Menlo Circus Club, it would be limited to persons associated with Menlo Circus Club. So it would be employees of that facility, as well as Bear Gulch Reservoir.
And that's the language that we used in previous housing elements?
That's correct. That's the language that's in our zoning code and the housing element currently, yes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So then this strategy looks at specifically the R1B zone, but it could certainly also be considered town-wide. But this would be one step, right, in that direction, is to allow two dwelling units by right. So we would need to amend the development standards to have sufficient room on that space. But that would kind of be a next step, is then you would be able to have two dwelling units on an existing R1B lot. And if you were to consider allowing a condo map, then those could both be ownership. Without a condo map, then it would be one, person would own it and then they could live in one and rent the other out.
But what about, what, what about combining the units, the, the, the properties to then build something larger?
Well, this would just say two units per legally created lot. So another scenario is
They could actually have three because they could have a J, a JDU, an ADU and a regular residence. Is that not correct?
Well, I guess they, if, under this scenario, they could have four. If they had, say, a duplex plus an ADU plus a JDU, unless we were specifically to, to limit that in the code.
Okay, all right. But, but it wouldn't allow them to just recklessly say, okay, I bought the two properties, like we've seen in some places in Menlo Park, they buy two adjacent lots and the next thing you know, they have a bigger facility.
Yeah, it depends on how you word the zone change. If you word it number of units per lot, then that limits it. If you word it, you know, a density per acre, then that might be a different scenario. Where if they were to merge properties, they could get more units. So it depends on how we craft it.
All right.
And then the next slide, I think it's kind of a reducing the lot size. Great, thank you. So right now, throughout the town, the minimum lot size is one acre. So you've got 170 foot width, 200 foot depth. If you reduce the lot size just a bit down to 40,000 square feet, which we like to refer to as an Atherton acre, also reduce the width to 150 and depth to 175, we actually may be able to see some new subdivisions. And it mostly pertains to reducing that width. Then you can get a flag lot situation on some of these larger properties that, that really don't apply today. So we may be able to see a few more net new, um, single-family homes constructed without a dramatic change to the community. So that's another item that could be studied further to see how many units we would really realize from that scenario.
So how, how would that be different than, than subdividing the lot to 0.85 of an acre? Like we've already approved. We have the density, we have the density bonus, okay? And you can get down to 0.85 of an acre.
If you provide affordable housing.
Yeah. Or if you, if you design it to be affordable housing, yes.
Right. So this would apply to market rate housing.
Okay.
Not specifically to affordable housing, correct. And then the next item is
If I could ask you the follow-on question based on your comment. If what we're trying to do is get, meet the density bonus, why wouldn't we be looking for semi-affordable? why wouldn't we be looking for semi affordable or medium affordable and things like that? If somebody is going to subdivide a lot, make it smaller, then they're going to build regularly priced homes, then I don't see how that helps our housing element.
Well, one area is with the market rate production and we're, we're just having a hard time meeting that number. And I'm concerned going forward because of some of the housing units getting demolished. So we need to provide in the next cycle 144 new above moderate units. And so that would address that category.
But there's a, there's a, there's a, a limit to that, isn't there? I think it's like 50 or 80% of the areas' median income.
Above moderate would be market rate units.
Okay.
And that's 144.
Okay, all right, okay, all right. I thought all these had a limit, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the last one, right.
And Lisa, can, can I just ask, I'm surprised that there, that this is worth talking about. You said, do you think there's some in Atherton? Do you have any sense of how many houses we're talking about here? I mean, is it two or 20 or what are you thinking?
Yeah, no, it could be maybe more than 20. I've had a few inquiries over the years where I've told them, no, you don't meet that minimum lot width. And so you cannot do a fly lot. And they've wanted to do kind of that access strip as an easement, but it needs to be part of the property. And so that doesn't even work how our codes defined.
Okay.
So I mean, we could, I think we would need to run a kind of a GIS map analysis to see how many it would result in.
But it's, it's material. It's not, it's not two or three. You're, you're talking, you think it's 20 plus?
Yeah, I don't think it's 144, but it's, it's more than two or three.
Yeah.
Wait, while you're on that, Lisa, I have a question, which is you showed that the RENA allocation for 2015 to 2022 for the above moderate was three units and that Atherton produced seven units. I don't understand that when we're having somewhere in the neighborhood of 25 or 28 houses built a year that are certainly all in the above moderate range.
Yeah, that's net new. So what you're seeing is, is production of, you know, they demo an old house and they build a new house. I, we can't count that. We need to count net new construction of homes.
Okay.
And like I said, it's challenging because sometimes people buy the house next door, tear it down, and they make a very lovely garden.
Right.
So that's, that's a minus one.
Right, right. Okay.
Okay, great. So the next item is a little unique for this community, but it could be created planned development zoning. So that's what's known as more of a site specific zoning regulations. We could have development standards that would apply. And then if you get a development application, it could be applied to those properties on a case by case basis. An example would be, you know, maybe allowing up to 20 units per acre in order to meet the state's requirements. And it may not count towards RENA unless we actually rezone some properties within three years of adoption of the housing element. So this one's a bit of a reach, but I just wanted to throw it out. There is something you could think about. We're aware of at least one property owner that's interested in developing their property adjacent to Redwood City Limits with some multifamily housing. And it looks more like kind of attached townhomes. And we would have some, you know, development standards that could be associated with that for a design review. So this one may be a little bit more of a challenge, but just wanted to throw it out there. And then.
I would think that that's actually a good idea personally, that, that certain, certain areas that are being surrounded, for example, by other communities that are, you know, over, over high density, like in that one case you're talking about. I mean, it would fit in and it actually would look very nice based on, you know, the way it was designed. And, you know, obviously yourself and the planning commission would have to approve it. But to me, that makes sense to be adding something on, on a lot like that versus a lot just sitting vacant.
One of the, one of the issues we might have is that we don't have a control over design criteria. So somebody walks in and just says, hey, I feel like putting this in here. Then, then it's tough for us to deny it based on design. And although we'd like to have homes that look a certain way, so they sort of fit the character of the, of the neighborhood, there would be no requirement to do that.
We, we.
For a moment, I, I think the process here is we're going to get through this presentation, take questions, right? And then, and then we'll have comments and have this kind of a discussion is, if that's the process.
The pleasure of the group here, yeah. But just to respond quickly to that, you're right, we can't be subjective in the design, but we could establish very objective design criteria. So we could say, right, as long as this development fits in this criteria and looks like this, then it would be approved. So we could specify it, yes. And then kind of the last one I wanted to mention was that through the 21 elements group, we did have a community meeting and we had breakout rooms for each, each jurisdiction. And so the next slide shows some of the comments we received at that meeting was an opportunity for more home sharing. They noted representative from hip housing that there's only one home sharing opportunity in town right now. And maybe that's due to COVID. So I absolutely got their contact information. We want to promote that more. Or so we'll work with Anthony to get the word out on that. They can also help people rent out their ADUs. So that's a great opportunity and resource as well. And then there was comment about rezoning areas near Menlo Park Train Station to allow residents to subdivide their homes, create smaller homeownership opportunities, a suggestion to create more density along the El Camino corridor, maybe allow duplex, triplexes. And then they would like to see opportunities for multifamily development to support persons that work in the community. So I just wanted to let you know that those are some comments that we received at the meeting. And I know Commissioner Lane was also at that meeting if you wanted to add anything. And then the last slide, just, you know, we're going to hear what your thoughts are. We can do some more analysis, get some more additional information. And then we can, you know, do some check backs either as a study session jointly or individually with planning commission and city council. We're targeting completion by fall of 2022 because we want to make sure we get certified by the state by their deadline of January 1st, 2023. All right, now just open it up for any discussion that you have. Thank you very much.
I think we're taking questions goes along, but let me just double, double check and see any questions from members of the commission and/or the council.
I have my hand up.
Okay, Bill and David, I see you too.
So I see the comment on the Menlo Park Train Station. Obviously, the closest ones there would be, you know, Oak Grove, for example. But in the state laws, they said transit stations, not, and that would be bus stations, bus stops. So there are several regular bus stops up on Middlefield Road, as well as there are regular ones. There's like five of them on El Camino, down by Lloyd and Park, over by, you know, Menlo College, down, down by Watkins, et cetera. So, you know, I don't understand the, you know, low income people generally are using the buses more than they are using the trains, although both of them get used. So I would think that we would be considering at least doing that. And as I think was mentioned by our consultants, that would essentially open up half of Atherton to be redeveloped. Now, my last comment slash question, but, you know, we worked very hard to close the train station. So the people that lived over there, where the average housing price is about $3 million, maybe a little bit more, you can protect their, their. And so we're coming over to another part of the community where the average price of the house is over $7 million. And we're saying it's okay to do it there. I just don't understand how that, that could hold any water with regards to the conscience that we've had with what we've already done so far.
If we can continue with questions, David, did you have a question? Yeah, I see, I see.
I'm giving it an opportunity to unmute now. We still can't hear you, sir, so.
I'm trying.
They got it, they got it.
Hi, my name's David Aranda and I, I represent that lot you guys were talking about. We are not developers. My mother lived in that house for 60 some years and she passed away last August. And we kind of played around with doing something and, and, and we, anyway, we got 28 units on about 78,000 square feet. We left some trees, grow.
What, what lot? What lot?
It's, the address is 23 Oakwood Boulevard. And it's right on the Redwood City Atherton line where the Oakwood Circle is. Anyway, it's 500 feet deep on one side and 427 on the other. And we, we kind of put some townhouses that are two story, not three story. And we had parking for 60 cars. And I think we had 28 units trying to figure out how to, and spread out nice. We are not developers. We, we wanted to do something that looks like Atherton. The main building is like a six unit building and that's 70 feet set back and it kind of looks like a house. So just want to add that you actually do have control over what it looks like. Because we're not going to do anything until you say we can do it. And this is new to us and it's new to you. So you can design it if you want. We don't.
I don't think that's Atherton.
That's not Atherton?
Yeah, what's the, what's the address again?
23 Oakwood Boulevard. If it's not Atherton, then I go to the city and get it.
It's within the city limit, the town limits, yes.
Yeah, it's Atherton, it's.
I checked it.
Wait, anyway, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Arada. And I saw Diana had, is a question, we're still on questions, right? Diane, you got a question?
Yes, I have a question. We talked a little bit about the schools, the private schools, the house that was purchased by the fire station that's adjacent. Has there been any interest by any of those organizations to do anything? Have we heard any of them?
The school, the public, private schools have been supportive of us, including this in the plan. I've watched the site a couple of times. I do not know if they are going to move forward with any projects.
You have a bill question?
I can, I can answer that question that was asked.
Okay.
I had a conversation with, with Fan, as I think all of us did, but I brought up the housing issue. And he indicated that they didn't feel that they would like to do it because they're renting actually an apartment building or they actually bought an apartment building in another, in a, in a connecting town. And so they would like, they wouldn't mind having him on campus, but they don't feel they have the space. And so I had, I took the opportunity because I had a meeting with Stephen Weiner at the college. And he said, well, it depends on, you know, if they're going to pay for it, perhaps we could use, they can build it on our space. I did ask whether or not Fan, whether or not he'd spoken with Sacred Heart. And he said, the president of Sacred Heart said they weren't interested in doing it. So. So that's, that's for the private schools, that's kind of where we stand. So maybe, maybe Fan and Stephen will get together and at least discuss the possibility. If we can put any pressure on Sacred Heart, that may be another option because they have a lot more land. But, but that's, that's where those things are. So hopefully I.
Okay, any, any members of the public who haven't commented, who'd like to comment at this time?
And I, I don't see anyone, Vice Mayor.
Yeah. Let's pull it back in time for comments. Yes.
Hi, thanks, Mike. This is Alex Key. One thing I just wanted to mention about the high frequency bus stops. When I was looking at SB 50, it looked like within Atherton, none of our bus stops qualified for high frequency, even ECR, just because we're in the South County and a lot of Samtrans, Samtrans doesn't see a lot of people in Atherton taking buses or Menlo Park. So there, it would not, it did not qualify as high frequency, at least under SB 50. I don't know if these new bills qualifies that.
It's got the stops there, actually. It's, Alex, it's got the stops. If the stops are there with, with timed on the times, time scale, then it does qualify, whether or not.
Yeah, if, if, if there's enough stops during the rush hour or during that time. But when I was looking at SB 50, there wasn't enough stops at the time. That may change if they increase the number of stops. But South, our South County area generally doesn't have as, as much people taking buses, just because Menlo Park and Atherton don't. And Redwood City tends to be kind of the last major hub where they have a lot of the traffic. One other comment was not really in favor of, you know, adding duplexes to R1Bs because the lots are already pretty small. So if you add, you know, more, you know, up to six houses under this pro temps bill then, or six housing units, that's a lot. So especially if my area of town around Maple, it's, you know, there's a, already kind of a dearth of parking because of construction, but that's kind of another issue. So not, not terribly in favor of that either. That's all I wanted to say.
And Paul Tenelli, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, just one quick question for, for Lisa and looking over the tables of the, the RENA allocation and units produced. And we had a shortfall of, I think it was 26 combined two categories. So what is done accounting wise with the allocations with those numbers? Are they forwarded into the next allocation?
So our RENA cycle and that allocation ends on 2022. So we do have another recording year and a half to get there. So we may be much closer to achieving that based on the last cycle. But in most situations, yes, it does roll over to the next cycle for production.
Okay, Perry, I think you got your hand up?
And I just have a related question. This was raised early on, but I didn't think I understood it. What is the practical consequence of not hitting the allocation in any given period? Is it just that it rolls over? Are there financial penalties, et cetera?
It used to be, if I can add, it used to just be that it rolls over because HCD was taking a more generous view as to this. That has now changed. There's the potential for financial penalties and the withholding of any funding, state funding for infrastructure or other transportation services. And so you wouldn't be able to apply for grants. You wouldn't be able to secure those if your housing element is not compliant and the town is not meeting its numbers.
That, to, to characterize that, it, it sounds like there's not a lot of practical consequence to not hitting those numbers.
For Atherton, less so because it's not a, it's not a municipality that is so dependent on grant funding. However, I'm going to, I'm going to draw you all back to the analogy that I made about an hour ago with the city of Bell. Right? We had one bad actor resulted in really broad sweeping legislative changes. So if the legislature sees that municipalities are continuing despite these new sticks to not comply with their housing elements, I believe with pretty great certainty that we'll see a, a new batch of statutes that will impose more sticks.
Diana, you have some comment?
I, I actually, it was kind of a question. Has there been any discussion of, we, we need housing for our police? And the Holmer Palmer Park was one of the places that you were talking about. Has there been a discussion, I'm setting aside how we would fund it, but has there been a discussion of that kind of an opportunity for Atherton?
I mean, that were where we could rezone the POS to have more of a multifamily housing style. So unfortunately, if you create something that looks more like a dorm, so it's just bedrooms and it doesn't have independent kitchens, that would not count as a housing unit. City manager may want to add on to that.
Yeah, he's got his hand up, George.
Actually, I just wanted to comment a little further on what city attorney and was responding to Perry about. There's, there's more of an issue related to our not having a compliant housing element. In other words, not planning for the housing than there is for not meeting, right now, anyway, the mandates.
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask also. If we outline a plan and no developer does it, but if our plan says you could, that's the first stage of compliance, right? And then later on, you know, what happens, they could change that. But in the beginning, we need to come up with a plan that looks compliant and then we have to wait and see the market accepts it, right?
Right.
Right.
The town has no obligation to construct housing. You just have the obligation to plan for it and zone for it.
Right.
And and we need to be able to convince HCD that this is going to result in the production of housing. So the example with the private schools, why it's limited right now, we haven't seen that production in at least two cycles. So if we make a change, remove some barriers and some constraints. Then hopefully we'll be able to see some production. So they're gonna look at whatever we present to them and to see, is this feasible? Can we expect to see these housing units there? And we may need to even support it with kind of an economic analysis that shows why we believe we will see the production.
Yeah. And Bill, I know both you and Rick have a, well, actually, Rick hasn't spoken for a while. Let me, Rick, you have something to say?
Yeah, so when I looked over the staff report, I thought that this was the area that was the most potential. I I I don't see there being any support for items three, four, five, or six, although I could hear a creative proposal, but I I don't think this community will support that. Um, but I do think that the idea of uh, supporting uh, units for staff at schools. It, I would I would think that that would have real support and uh, but it sounds like from your presentation, Lisa, that that is enough, that's what we proposed before, so that would not be new. So the proposal now is that, in fact, we say to the schools, we're gonna open up your uh, location for multifamily housing by anybody. That's gonna have a horrendous reaction. I I just, that's gonna be a horrible reaction. What, the schools are gonna go crazy, what?
They control it, they own it. They can build it, they can rent it to whoever they want.
So to be up for, up to them to choose whether or not to build it. So the developer, so you're telling me that the housing bills that are going through the legislature that are forcing communities to uh, to enable multifamily housing on single family lots is something that the schools can control. They're not gonna be controlled by the legislature telling them that they have to build.
Correct, they don't have to build it.
Okay, oh, that's interesting.
Bill, you got a comment?
Uh, yeah, um, so I think that one of one of the things that we've had in our one of the things we've had in our housing element for a long time was that Menlo College was going to build a dorm. Now, they chose to build a dorm, but they didn't make it suites because they wanted to pack in as many people as possible. So, but many other people that are staying in those dorms, okay, are uh, low income. They're being provided for with scholarship or partial scholarship. They're being provided for with food in the in the cafeteria. And I know today, as it's written, it doesn't match, okay? But it's something that we're doing. And it does handle a lot of these categories. Could we have our legislative group open the door to have discussions with regards to that? To try and get that in some way covered? Because there was a state bill that did cover housing for for uh, for schools. But it wasn't in the RENA allocation. So maybe we could. So maybe we could ask them to do something for us to push an agenda um, that other college or even high school, you know, that have have live in dorms. Uh, those communities would probably want to have that.
We've already added that to their list, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, great. I'm glad I came up with something that you were.
Good idea.
But and by the way, I also, I do support six. Uh, you know, I think that the presentation that Mr. Arata made, I I think is something we should really carefully look at. It's on a case by case basis. And you know, as long as they're complying with everything that we would put down, I would think that that would be something that we should we should seriously consider. Yes, it's only gonna be onesie twosie here and there. But it could actually add some big numbers. That's my comment. Thank you.
If I could on that, just to comment on a couple of things. Um, I I'm sympathetic to the schools not wanting, and I'm not sure we should want the the schools to be um, able to rent out units to non school personnel for a few reasons. One of which is Sacred Heart has pre kid, pre K kids walking around there. And, you know, all the way up through high school and and I just.
They want to control who's there.
Yeah, that's a little problematic. And I think the same is true at at Menlo School. With with regard to Menlo College, you know, it may be a different story. Um, but then you're also, uh, their economics would have a lot to do with what they they applied for. We'd have to watch it very carefully, be my my thought. With regard to what Bill just said, um, about item six. That and the staff proposal, that makes sense to me too. And I'm not talking about the specifics, I'm talking about in the abstract, which is to say, if our goal is to preserve the character of the town as much as possible. If there are edge portions of the town that are already surrounded by high density housing and and we could carve it out properly, that might be a nice way to add units without really affecting the vast majority of the of the town. And so I'd like to at least explore that as a possibility. And and I actually like the idea um, of of these flag lots, Lisa, that you discussed where apparently if we adjust the size of the lots, possibly we may pick up some number. I think that's also worth exploring.
Yeah.
Like those would be things that might move us forward in numbers without really materially affecting the the character of the town.
We're also open to any other ideas that are not on the list. So feel free if you've got some other ideas.
I see Eric's got his hand up, Eric.
Yeah, I I would just say I I agree that the narrow a lot idea would be my first, my first choice along, well, tied with the school, opening up the schools. And that could be, the the issue about traffic could be controlled by a different access method or other other ingress address of the site differently than what we have now. Uh, the one thing about, you know, so I've been on the Pleasant Hill Planning Commission, I was on the Contra Costa Planning Commission. And when you when you choose an edge, you create a new edge. So just be very aware of the fact that once you create an edge, you're you're, you you've just started it. Uh, and uh, um, you know, there might be some natural barriers. Uh, but uh, once you have one side of the street, the edge, the other side of the street is the edge too.
Yeah. And Alex, you've got your hand raised?
Yeah, I just wanted to add on to Bill's comment. Uh, another idea might be to also allow senior housing, if they allow dorm rooms too. I know that, I think that Sacred Heart has some retired nuns that live there. And certainly if they want to increase the number of retired clergy that live on campus. I don't think people would necessarily be opposed, but would provide a lot of, a lot of housing there, a lot of units. But of course, that's kind of group living and senior housing, which probably counts the same as dorms in the way it's counted. But if they're willing to count dorms, they probably be willing to count senior housing as well. That's all. Thanks.
Other comments? Not seeing much. Let me ask staff, are you getting what you need? George, you getting what you need out of this?
Yeah, I think we're getting some pretty good discussion and and feedback. We we, Lisa, you got several that we can explore, right?
Yeah, yeah. And if there's any other ideas you want us to study without committing to anything, we're happy to do that as well.
Yeah, so if anything comes to mind after this, send me an email and we'll get that into the process.
All right. So now onto item number, what? Four.
Adjourn, right?
Which is.
That's right.
Okay. If we're if if we're done with no other comments, Alex, is your hand up, the old one or is there a new one?
That's my old one, sorry.
Terrific. See, see, no final comments. Let's, um, I I heard Bill moved to adjourn and I think that makes good sense. So thank you all very much and until next time.